Right, welcome to the City Planning Commission Working Session Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 11th at 7:00. To listen or speak in public comment, please call 206-337-9723. Or toll-free at 877-853-5247. With that, I'm gonna move to call the meeting to order. And we'll go straight to public comment. Persons may speak for three minutes about an item that's not listed as a public hearing on this agenda, and please state your name and address for the record. Do we have any callers, Brett?
We do have a couple of listeners. Caller with the phone number ending with 134. You can press *6 to unmute and address the committee for up to three minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Leonard and Chair Lee. It's Ken Garber, 28 Heather Hill Court in the Second Ward. I apologize, I haven't had time to review all the UDC changes that you'll be talking about tonight. But I did sneak a peek at the proposed change for the public participation meeting. Yeah, so important name change for sure. But not the timing. You know, right now, this happens before plan submission, that the public is noticed and, you know, meets with the developer who makes a presentation and answers questions and a dialogue takes place. Now it's proposed to move it as far up as possibly just 15 days before the planning commission vote. The rationale, which I read from the city's economic development plan is, quote, "This extends current process, extends the site plan approval timeline for developers, usually between a couple of weeks to a month, but these meetings and notifications almost never result in meaningful changes to a project proposal," end quote. You know, I question that there's a delay. Developers can proceed with the normal process of finalizing a site plan application while they hold a public meeting. I don't, I don't think they, it all grinds to a halt because of the meeting. And these meetings do result sometimes in meaningful changes. Just a week ago, you heard the developer of a 1209 South University refer to its public participation meeting and the building electrification concerns that were expressed there. So made an impact. This is a chance for people like me to be heard at an early stage of a project. Moving it up to just before planning commission consideration absolutely ensures that no meaningful changes will be made based on public comment. No developer is going to listen to random individuals at that late stage. And it leaves open the possibility that the public may not even be aware of a given project until a couple of weeks before it goes before you. Yes, documents are posted to A2 stream, but that system is very hard to navigate, full of bugs, illogical, and full of unproductive search options. It's almost impossible to use it to identify new projects that are under review. Bottom line, I ask you to maintain the current timing of these public participation meetings.
Thirty more seconds.
I don't need 30 seconds, I'm done. Thanks very much for hearing my comments and thanks for all your great volunteer work. I really always appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Brett, do we have anyone else on the line?
No other hands are raised.
Gotcha, give it two seconds. Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment. And we will have public comment at the end as well. All right, we'll go on to agenda number three for the working session. This is the presentation and the discussion of the Unified Development Code Changes for Community Participation and PUDs Plan Unit Developments. With that, Brett, do you want to share your screen?
I am actually going to have Hank pick us off.
Great.
Hi, good evening to everyone. And I will be sharing back and forth with Mr. Leonard this evening. We thought that it would be a good idea to put some of the items from the 318 agenda back in front of you before you were actually in a voting session to discuss them at greater length and also talk about a few things that came up first half that we'd like to propose either immediately or in the future as we were going through the Economic Development Resolution changes. So starting with just an overview of what we'd like to talk through tonight. This introduction, discuss planned unit development potential changes. Talk through community participation at a little bit greater length. Talk through any questions that you might have in advance of the March 18th agenda since you have not seen this since September, many of these topics. And then walk through status of the items from Council Resolution 24-109, from which many of these came. And of course, open discussion as always, this is a working session. So first, just in case it has been a little while since you thought about these, to advance the items from the Council Resolution R-24-109, we have placed several Unified Development Code sections on your March 18th agenda. If you would like to refresh your memory, there's links to these in this presentation in your packet, which are underlined in blue right here on the screen. We, we have identified a couple of other items and some of those, we just wanted to preview our future looking. So the first will be Manfred Leonard discussing planned unit development potential changes. Let me know when you'd like me to advance slides.
Yeah, you can go to the next one. So, so you will see, and I want to just add a little clarification. We're definitely not going to cover everything that we already talked about at the work session on the September 10th. So, but you will see some interaction between some of the things we're talking about now and what was discussed on the 10th. Planning developments is one of those. For example, when we introduced the first sort of conceptual response to that resolution from City Council, the look-haring notifications occur and references occur in several sections within our city code. They occur, for example, in site plans, area plans, wetland use permits, and planned unit development site plans. When we're looking at the planned unit development site plans, there's been this frequent, or not frequent, but occurrence that's been happening as of late that, in short, rose to the prospect of bringing this concept to you for consideration. And if, depending on the feedback, will, might be included in the agenda for next week. We did notice this section, so we have the flexibility to do that if desired. So to be clear, this is a staff-initiated UDC amendment. What I'm going to talk about here is not specific to that resolution, but rather something that we've seen through conversations with property owners and potential property owners over the last couple of years and a potential solution to it. Right now, within our UDC, we require that is precedent, one of the components of an application for a planned unit development is everybody with a property owner interest has to basically jointly apply for that planned unit development designation. And that makes a lot of sense, right? It provides, it is a framework where we as a city are having property owners come to us and say, hey, we would like to, in total, develop and regulate our property to maybe achieve certain public benefits that might not be achievable within existing districts within the city code. And of course, accordingly, we want to make sure that those property owners are coming to us willingly to do that. We also require that any amendments to a planned unit development follow the same procedures as the preliminary first establishment of a planned unit development. And what that means is that whether you are first coming to the city to seek planned unit development or you would like to modify it, that same condition occurs in the language of our code where all property owners have to sign off on that. And one of the things that I'm going to be proposing is the concept of changing that standard when a PUD is established and somebody wants to modify it, giving less than the full balance, the full collection of all property owner interests the ability to seek that rezoning. So that's an important distinction that would be differentiating what the standards are for initial application for a planned unit development and what would be required for an amendment to an existing planned unit development. Hank, you can proceed. So I'm just going to walk through a couple of property examples where we have experienced dialogue in this context over recent history. By recent history, probably within the last five years in total. So this is one PUD, and many of you might remember that we had an application not too long ago for a potential PUD amendment at this, this site. And this planned unit development, which you see is just east of Green Road, sort of not immediately, but somewhat south of Plymouth Road, includes all of the properties that you see here. And the planning development encompasses the, basically that entire square, basically the extent of that aerial photograph that you're seeing there. The planning development dictates a typology of development. It provides a lot of opportunity for things like office and research. It allows for hotels. It does not allow for residential. And we have had multiple applications for the vacant property, which you see represented in the top left or northeast or northwest portion of the PUD district and visually on the top left photograph of a vacant site. And a lot, there's been a lot of interest in pursuing multifamily residential for that. As part of that, I don't profess that I was part of it. I don't profess that they were drawn to their conclusions. But one of the things we've heard is that there was some resistance by the existing property owners, one, to allow residential uses and to be, to seek amendment to that PUD to allow residential uses. And two, frankly, there were some barriers to even find the right person or entity who could speak for the ownership of those properties. When those properties are owned or operated by a large corporation or something, sometimes it's even difficult to find the person capable of making those sort of land use decisions on behalf of an organization. So this is one example where the requirement that any changes to that PUD amendment would require all of the property owners to apply for that has been a barrier to potentially considering changes to this planning development. Next slide, please. This is another example. This is Ashley Muse located downtown. I'm sure most of you are quite familiar with it. It's located generally southwest of William and Main Street. And you see with this, this is on the aerial photograph on the right, the, the boundaries of this site represent the planned unit development district. It includes the mid-rise building that was originally some DTE offices and some retail and other, and some residential on the top. And then it also incorporates these townhomes or rowhouse developments to the south of the site. You see from the aerial photograph, generally all of those numbers are representing different ownership entities within this planned unit development. In this case, the property owner has been converting that mid-rise from, from a mix of residential and office and retail to retail and apartments. And one of the things that they are interested in pursuing is short-term rentals for that building. Again, because of our PUD regulations, it requires all owners of a planned unit development district in order to apply for any modification to a planned unit development. And what that means is my, again, sort of anecdotal, my understanding is, is that the, the owners of that larger building entity approached the condominium association board who expressed that they were not interested in, in applying for that application. You know, that is, on one hand, it is a construct of our regulation and the establishment on this zoning. On the other hand, it is really taking away a basic opportunity for somebody to seek a different regulatory framework for their property interests. So this is another example of how that dynamic has played out from the establishment to seeking potential amendment. Next slide, please. And then this is the third example that I'll share. This is Plymouth Green Crossings. This is off of Plymouth Road, just, just to the northwest of Green and Plymouth. This site was a zone PUD, and I want to be clear, this problem has been quote-unquote solved because this parcel has been rezoned to TC1. So it is no longer zoned PUD. However, in recent history, the building on the left that you see there is a former bank. You can see it was a former fifth third bank. The PUD requires that that building can only be used for a financial institution. And so when fifth third bank vacated that building, other uses sought to be located there. One was a marijuana provisioning center, one was a veterinary office. In both cases, it would have required a modification to that planning development of which there was not unanimous support of by all those property owner interests that you see replicated on the aerial photograph to the right. So again, it really limited and provided some degree of influence that an adjacent property owner has over this other property interest to seek modifications to their regulations. Hank, next slide. So as my dog in the background is calling to you, the question before you is, what are your thoughts about potentially distinguishing an initial application for planned unit development to require all those property owners, but for subsequent amendments that it could be made by somebody else? Maybe it's one property owner, maybe it's a smaller grouping. If that were the case, I think it would provide a reasonable opportunity for people who are coming to a PUD either late or frankly, changing their mind, maybe on a different scale than the other neighbors. It still provides the city the ultimate legislative authority to decide whether or not a modification is appropriate or not. And one of the things that could be considered in a criteria for such modifications is to which level of support there is across property owners. So Commissioner Lee, that's kind of the end of this first phase. We could stop for a little bit of discussion there, or we could continue running to see what you'd like to spend the most time on collectively.
Yeah, yeah, sure thing. Does anybody have any burning desire to speak on this particular issue right now? Because, yes, Commissioner Norton.
Yeah, I was wondering, Brett, is there any reason that the parts of the PUD couldn't just be rezoned for that subsection instead of having to have the whole PUDs move in one, in tandem?
So we thought about that, but the way we draft PUD districts, we draft them by area and totality. And the regulations then end up applying to all of those properties. And it's sort of, it's, I think that's why it's structured the way it is. Because part of a PUD often is, there's a logic to developing this in totality. And when we are to pull a piece out of that, it, it's not absolutely that the benefits aren't still realized with the balance of the site. But to just automatically assume that, I think our regulation says, no, that might have been a factor for the city to decide that this was beneficial. And for one party to say like, we no longer want to be a part of that totality, what are the ramifications? And is there, does that somehow lessen the benefits that were maybe originally conceived or realized by that? So it's a question, but I think it's, frankly, it's also subject to interpretation because again, it has the impact of changing the legal description of that PUD, that PUD district, which currently applies to all the properties. I can, it might be something to pursue with our attorney's office to see what possibilities there are. But thus far, we've been looking at that as, that's still a modification to the PUD to reduce its size, because often we're stipulating what the size of that area should be.
Yeah, well, even changing the allowable uses would be a legislative action, right? So I guess my one comment is I'm, I understand the logic of having all of the collective owners move to have the PUD. And to an extent, I get the logic of amending it as well. At the same time, it strikes me that that opens the door for a single property owner to have veto power over everything. And that seems to be kind of extreme on the other side. And if it's a legislative action, just because you're requesting it, doesn't mean the legislature is bound to respond or to do whatever you, you want. So I guess I'm inclined to say it's worth discussing how we might modify it in a, in a reasonable, logical way. But I don't have a preconceived notion what that exactly would be.
Thank you. Sarah, did you want to add something?
It's, it was similar and the same kind of question about, like, why not just have a new PUD within a PUD? And I think what I'm hearing is that even if you just wanted to rezone, actually outside of a PUD, to a nor, some other kind of zoning classification, it requires the amendment of the PUD.
Hank, could you go back to the Plymouth Green Crossing slide? I guess the third one. So just, just as a way of an example, this site, when you focus in on the right, like the physical development of that site was in totality, right? It was contextualized with a shared drive. This bank actually happens to have a drive-through. And I think the, I think it's a question that was there any factor in why this consolidated arrangement made sense based on that restriction of uses? Were there thoughts of like off-hours parking? That the bank was going to be off-hours with the residential or what have you? I wasn't here for the approval, so I don't know that. But I think, yeah, that's an example why the zoning. And furthermore, just, this is solvable, but I just want to point out it's a challenge. When you see the actual yellow lines there of ownership, they don't, when sites like this are condos, they don't necessarily follow a logical zoning pattern. It's like, I don't think zoning that 3389 is just the building entity is the right thing. So I think it would be logical that if you are going to pull that out to think about where else on that site is it gonna be pulled out? And what implications does that have elsewhere? So, so yes, that might be another way just to make it easier to, easier, or frankly, to craft PUDs in the future where they're not regulated in totality in the same way. Maybe the same benefits can be achieved, but we are very specific in how we describe them so that they're a little bit more modular.
Got it, thank you. Any other comments? Daniel?
It's a quick question. The unanimous consent requirement, what section of the code are we looking at here?
You are looking at? Sub-D, sub-1. "The entire parcel or parcels for which application is made shall be under one ownership or the application shall be made with a written authorization of all property owners' legal or equitable interest in the property or properties."
And Brett, it sounds like what you might be looking to explore is a modification of that. Is that right?
Yeah.
Surety or something like that?
It could be right there, or we actually have a section in 5.30, I think. That is modifications to a PUD, but it just points back there. So it might be, I haven't crafted the language. It might be either just changing that to say, for an initial application, this applies. For an amendment to an existing, this other thing applies. Or we might in the amendment section say, for the purposes of amendment, the ownership requirements in section 5.2911 shall not apply.
Okay, and Dan?
Yeah, I don't know why, I mean, I'm just kind of spitballing here, but I don't know. Like I sort of understand conceptually why we, if you think about it like a rezoning, we don't ask for consent from every individual property owner within a district.
When, when the city's initiating a rezoning.
Right, when the city's initiating it. We do here, and I can, I can understand maybe a policy difference. But on a, on an amendment, that feels like a lot of process without a lot of benefit as long as the notice is being provided, right? If they're getting due process and notice, then they have an opportunity to protect their interests the way anybody else would. It feels like a lot of process to me. To your point, it probably is very challenging to get contact like a warm body at the end of a layer of LLCs times however many folks have a property interest in the, in the district. That, that could be probably insurmountable, and it, it's insurmountable without a lot of benefit.
Lisa?
Sorry about that. I was going to wait until later, but since we are sort of proceeding, my question was a little bit different, which is that in the case of a PUD, there is a public benefit that the, that the original zoning was contingent on. And so I guess I would want to know what would happen to that public benefit.
No, there's no change to the requirement. That still exists. So it's, it's at the discretion of ultimately the council as to whether or not the changes would somehow invalidate or reduce that benefit to a point where the PUD district was no longer valid. I will say.
I'm sorry.
Well, just one other aspect I would say is that some of these circumstances I would, I am sharing with you. Again, I don't want to speak to all the deliberation that happened at the time, but at times historically, the city has used PUDs who in addition to balance public benefits with relaxations of some standards, who lock down sites so only one outcome is possible. And so in the case of Plymouth Green Crossings, for example, I don't want to say it's not possible, but it's hard for me to quickly jump to the conclusion that somehow restricting that use to only a financial institution is really core to the public benefit that's being realized from that particular planned unit development. It's not to say that other people didn't look at that differently. It's not to say that there weren't other public benefits. But I think this challenge is particularly acute when you have PUDs that were frankly, used more to restrict and ensure one outcome could happen and no other potential feared outcomes could happen. And I, I think that there would be questions posed that might not frankly, have a big impact one way or another on the public benefits that were otherwise achieved.
So let's take a hypothetical of a, of an, of where there was an affordability component to the benefit. And there was mixed, and there were row houses and there was a mid-rise that had office and residential. And we're in a declining occupation of office, period. And so repurposing office might be desirable. But we had, in the city, we recognize a crisis of long-term residential housing. And so a change, a repurposing of office, and I'm gonna, because this is my hypothetical example, I'm going to say that the repurposing is about the office, not the residential in the mid-rise part. A repurposing of office to short-term residential, I think I would have to think about whether that was a public benefit if I were the council member who had to think about it. But I sort of, I don't know how, you know, how can planning commission help me in that? You know, if we make this change to UDC, where are we putting the discretion on that? It just, ugh, you know, PUDs can be so complicated and cumbersome. And I wouldn't, you know, I think the desire here is to relax things, but then, but, but I, but I'm concerned about the, if there really were a relaxation that in the minds of some reasonable people would feel like a public benefit got compromised by the relaxation. Not sure if this is a very helpful scenario at all.
In that hypothetical, the office would probably be perfect, it's perfectly permissible to convert it to apartments. In that case, that office was not, the office was of course, not the previously committed affordable units. And there's been no proposed change to that. So in that, in this case, I think. in that in this case, I think the question that would face the planning commission and ultimately the council probably was not that there would be an eroding of the previous affordable housing commitment, but rather that was there some inherent public benefit in that office use? Is there some inherent benefit in the office or multifamily use that is stronger than a short term rental use? And the planning commission has the ability in that case to make that recommendation. The council has the ability to make that decision. But right now, neither neither are faced or get that opportunity, however you look at it, to do that because that requirement sets basically a threshold where it doesn't even get to that unless there's in this case unanimous support by every condominium owner there or potentially the board. I don't want to speak to the legality of like whether that condo board can speak for everybody, but yeah, so I but in an alternative scenario, that PUD could have had an affordable housing commitment. And they could come and say, we no longer want to do the affordable housing commitment. And then the same thing would apply. The planning commission could opine and advise the council and the council could decide, no, that was an important finding of this and we are not going to be inclined to modify the PUD to rid this project of that regulation. So probably not helping. The sort of it is you still have the regulatory authority. This, I think, I think this could have the impact of providing property owners more opportunity to bring those questions to the planning commission and council.
Mr. Norton?
Yeah, I think I was gonna make that same point. Right now, the way the PUD structure is written, it's frozen every PUD in time permanently forever. I mean, realistically, if particularly a PUD that's got multiple owners involved. So all of this change would do would be to allow for flexibility back into the system. And just because of PUD, some number of PUD owners have requested a modification to the PUD doesn't obligate the city council to make that change. It just puts back on the table. Is this a good idea or not? So it's putting it's allowing for flexibility back in the decision making that's not there currently. And maybe that's a good thing. And you know, why should we have PUDs locked forever? And you could just say, one of the things we're going to consider is, does this diminish the public benefit that came with the PUD? Or maybe it even enhances it, or it does something better that we now value. So as I'm talking this through, I'm more inclined to say, yes, we should do this. That the way the PUD structure is written now is just kind of freezing PUDs forever in a way that maybe there's no good reason to do that.
The only other thing that I would say that we should be cognizant of is PUDs are normally accompanied with like a development agreement as well as cross easements that regulate kind of within the actual properties themselves, right? So the development is gonna agreement is gonna run with it. But you're gonna have like vehicular pedestrian ingress, egress easements or cross parking easements, things of that nature. They're gonna be bound by, you know, real estate law, I suppose, or contract laws in between those property owners. So I think the idea of creating flexibility is is, I guess, it's a good thing. I'm just wondering how effective it's going to be at the end of the day. And so and so my question actually would be like, what percent of our zone currently is PH PUD? And you know, how how effective will this be in achieving some kind of change? But at the same time, I'm also privy to thinking that, you know, flexibility, at least not creating kind of an onerous unanimous consent. Is that the right standard? Did I just want to be mindful about the practicality of like, are there other things that are going to govern the relationships between the parcels? Independent of zoning. So Dan?
Yeah, I mean, the only other point I wanted to make. Again, going back to the difference between an application and an amendment. There's that. There's an opportunity here where you have multiple different ownership interests where you have. It's not just that they can't make the application. There's your, it feels like our code is inviting opportunities for extortion, right? Like subsidy. It's if if you've got a district that's got five parcels in it, a PUD district with five parcels in it with different ownerships. And you've got consent from four and you and you've got one holdout. I don't know why. I don't know why we would draft a law to permit that kind of power in that one holdout, right? That feels artificial to me. What we're trying to do, what we're trying to do is regulate land use. And if the amendment has validity, if it has merit and a majority of the owners of the of the properties in the district want it done and council and planning look at it and say, we agree, isn't that the end of it? Why would we want it to be unanimous on an amendment? I'm not seeing the rationale for it. So I'm seeing a lot of logic, I think, in making the change.
Got it. Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to opine slash comment on this? Okay, Brett, do you think you got kind of what you need? It sounds like we're actually in favor of taking a look at that unanimous and it'd be worthwhile.
Yeah, thank you for the dialogue.
Cool. Thanks. Let's keep going.
Okay, next up, we have community participation as we will hopefully soon have written into the Unified Development Code. These first two, the updated language and some of two changes to thresholds and meeting requirements were discussed in September. However, some future opportunities for potentially onsite signage or other communication ideas for ongoing conversations and awareness with community you have not necessarily seen. So currently in the Unified Development Code projects for the purposes of community participation are divided into type one and type two projects. Type one being the more intense of the two. And you can see what the thresholds are on the screen. So type one thresholds. Newer amended planned project site plan, newer amended PUD zoning district, zoning map amendment, over eighty units, over sixty five feet in height, over fifty thousand square feet of floor area, a special exception use permit or anywhere else determined by the planning manager based on scope, nature of the application or unique and unusual characteristics. Type two thresholds would be any other application that requires public hearing, but not covered by the type one threshold. The change that is currently proposed is to strike an outdated application type. However, I wanted to rest on this slide and just ask if while this section is being amended, I we did discuss internally at several points within our team to say, where did this threshold come from? Where did this other threshold come from? And in some cases, we remembered the special exception uses were a recent addition, but others, you know, our our staff couldn't remember with a lot of clarity at what point we came up with or how eighty units was arrived at or sixty five feet in height. And or fifty thousand square feet of floor area. We wanted to just pose this to the planning commission to see, would you like to stress test any of these other areas within type one? Knowing that this would still remain to have a higher level of community participation than type two.
Lisa?
I don't have an answer to that question. But when I read this list, it was confusing to me. Because there were things in them that are zoning decisions, so you have to have participation. And then there were things in them that over eighty units, over, you know, so I think I'm noting what you're saying. I'm not sure if I want to stress test them, but I kind of want to know why. I mean, if it's if it's our, if it's a if it's consistent with zoning, then having citizen participation can be frustrating. So is there something else kicking in here that means that the the, well, I guess, yeah, what's the rationale for the feedback? Or or am I, I may simply be wrong and there may be mandates for those, just like there are for PUDs zoning map amendments and SEU permits.
You are correct that the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act would require public hearings for zoning actions. But for example, a site plan within a zoning district which would allow over sixty five feet in height or allow over eighty units would not necessarily, it is not required by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. It's not a zoning action. So it's a, it's something that we have in our code that we're saying this makes this a type one project. This is different. But we could change that. That could, that is kind of what I was asking. Is there any? Maybe there were conversations that I was not privy to because of my limited institutional knowledge about eighty units or sixty five feet that someone else would care to share or read and discuss.
We'll go to Julie next.
Yeah, one of the things that I, when I look at this and I I have a fair bit of experience with around my house of different projects and different sizes. And this almost feels like we're saying, okay, over eighty units or over sixty five feet in height is going to be problematic for the area or the and so we think that has become a type one threshold. When the reality is like, it it might be any number of other things that could make, you know, if like I, these just feel very random to me, like, okay, then I have a sixty four foot building with seventy nine units and forty nine thousand square foot of floor area. And so it's not, but that like, it just, it feels kind of like this is setting these out as being, this is where the problems are. And I don't think in reality that this, these are where something bumps into a special threshold, like what is the threshold we're talking about? Does sixty five feet in height mean something? Or is it just that it's a foot taller than sixty four feet? And and so, yeah, I I agree that this seems pretty random to me.
Gotcha. Sarah?
What I'm trying to understand and couldn't search the UDC fast enough. I'm curious if this was tied up to the conversation from three or four years ago of Site Plan Lite, where there were a number of things that we moved down, like we that used to go to city council for review that then moved to the final not coming to city council at all. And in in many cases, we tried to move things down to planning manager approval. This, that's a, that's a question for a minute, like, is are, is there a link between level one and level two? For type one and type two?
But so just to make sure we're all starting from the same base. There weren't changes to these thresholds when site plan review standards happened. There have traditionally been two levels. Type one requires a meeting. Type two requires just notification or postcards. So and I'm trying to find the history. I don't think these limits were incorporated initially, as far as I can tell, in two thousand eight when this ordinance was enacted, but I am working to establish when they were added.
I remember that there was a very extensive table that had some thresholds and and as we took things that were by rights that fit with the zoning off of planning F off of council table and kind of moved lots of things down the chain of approval. My recollection of that process is that we didn't there were a lot of things that got grouped or thrown away entirely. And there were, but there was some discussion of like, at what, at what point will people, should we consider? Will the perception be that we should have more robust engagement? So so to the question of like, where did those things come from? If it if it if it at all was tied to that, I don't remember us putting new ones in, but I think that there were some things that we just didn't cross out. So that was my institutional knowledge on that. The bigger part of this is I spend a lot of my day job thinking about community engagement and not wanting to frustrate the public generally. And having, making it clear, what is the purpose of a meeting is really important. Is it providing information? Is it seeking input? Like totally different, like, so long as those things are known, it tends to not frustrate the public. And so being clear about the intention. Maybe that's like a further slot, like maybe we'll get to that. So I can hold the rest of this for like, so what does that mean in terms of the timing? But like, I I think that there's a, there's some also evolution that has changed over time. Well, personally, but also kind of within this space about like, what what is appropriate to like for avenues for engagement? And is it that is it that neighbors just want to know if there's going to be eighty units? Or are we seeking feedback? And I think that that's really important, like to make sure that we're on the same page about what the purpose of this meeting is about.
But I am happy to, you know, move farther on the slides and we could come back to this if, you know, it's more helpful to talk about it in relationship to the like the rest of this section.
Yeah, well, it looks like if Mr. Norton, if if you have a comment directly related to this in response to Sarah's comment.
I, if I could just quickly riff on that, I think, I think, so I wasn't here for all of the prior stuff, so maybe I'm missing things, but I think the key thing is to think through when is community participation meaningful? And and that's linked to what can the community, what can the public officials do with it? And the more that the decision being made is administrative and ministerial and they can't do anything with the public communication, then it's actually counterproductive to hold a meeting and give people the sense that they can affect the decision when in fact they can't. So maybe that's more the informational kind of meeting. So I think Sarah's point is really well taken. That's maybe it's time to kind of rethink these kinds of participation in terms of the purpose they're serving and the kind of decision they're connected to. And only have community input gathering meetings for discretionary decisions where they could really affect things and only have informational meetings for administrative ministerial actions where the decision had, you know, if the litigator, if the litigant, if the petitioner has can check the boxes, they get the the approval. And there's really nothing that the community at that point can change on that without tripping litigation. So I wanted to just second what Sarah was saying, and maybe it's time to kind of rethink the kinds of public participation activities and what purpose they're serving and make sure they fit the kind of decision that's being made. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Donal?
Yeah, I'm gonna tie my comments to the signs because I was excited to see the signs because I was gonna bring up the signs, which is, I think we should just have signs that announce every project and they should say, a public comment will influence the outcome of this project or public comment will not influence the output of this comment. And the reason why I say that is, we were in Whistler, British Columbia this past summer for vacation. And they were putting in something new and there was this big, beautiful planning sign and then a paragraph down below that said, public comment will not influence the outcome of this project. And I thought, that is helpful because you now know something is coming. But you also now know your comments will not change what is coming. Now, that's going to obviously create questions for people. And I think this is an opportunity for the city to say, why isn't my public comment helpful at this point? And I think that's largely because of the stage that it is or the kind of development that it is. And that's more complicated than we can put on a sign. But there could be a QR code. But there could be a QR code or a link that says to learn more about why your public comment won't influence this, go here. And now people have an opportunity for that. Uh, with regard to type one and type two, they do feel a little arbitrary for me. Um, I think, uh, there's a development at the end of my street as we approach Main Street that's going to have seventy-five units, not eighty. Uh, so they wouldn't get this kind of sign, and I think it would be helpful for a sign like this to be there to tell my neighbors, hey, here's what's coming, here's how it fits within this sort of vision and have that project number to Mr. Garber's point that it can be hard to find things, uh, through our existing websites. But I did notice there's a, a new website that gives an overview that is similar to these signs, but it doesn't link then through to the project. It just sort of says, hey, this building's over eighty feet, it's going to have this many units, this much square foot. I thought that that was really great because that's a quick way to inform, uh, folks. So I feel like, um, I don't think we should distinguish between type one and type two, I think we should sign everything, and then we should just say in the lower right, "Public comment will influence," and this is how you can give your public comment and public comment will.
Thank you. Dan, is this quick? Because I would actually love to get through to the rest of the presentation.
Yeah, I'll keep my blow beating to a minimum. I'm going to quote my friend Nick Bagley from law school, uh, "Process favors the powerful." I think that I'm very interested in streamlining these categories, we have what we have to do, there's legal requirements we have to meet. But some of these categories to me are arbitrary, and unless I hear from staff that we're getting better projects as a result of putting things in the type one category, then all we've done is create, we've created process, you know, people complain all the time about how difficult it is for smaller developers to operate in our space. It's stuff like this that makes it hard for non-sophisticated um, Michigan-based developers to work here, it adds risks, it's adding complexity, and I'm not convinced that it's improving project quality in any way. Um, unless we hear from staff that it is, um, or it's legally required, I think we ought to strip this stuff down and, and move as much as we can to type two.
Got it. Thank you. Um, can we, uh, actually keep going with the rest of the presentation? Um, I know we got a bunch of content left.
I think some of the content that is left will connect back to the comments which were just made, and I appreciate, I believe it was just Commissioner White who brought up the new City Engagement Hub. I did mean to include that in the slide deck for this evening. Um, I can pull that up to share screen, that website is engaged.a2gov.org. And we are just starting to align, um, I mean, it just launched recently, uh, within the last month or so, and so we are just starting to, um, fit in projects into that. And so part of how we are thinking about um, type one and type two moving forward is, for example, any type one projects are the types of projects we are putting on that engagement hub. Uh, you know, proposals later in the slide deck related to signage, we were thinking to align with type one. So higher intensity projects could whether at inside or outside of regulation be aligned with other requirements and front-loading of information. But the, um, in terms of the requirements, if you are a type one project now, you must have, um, mailed written notice within a thousand feet of your site. You have to hold a participation meeting ten business days before you apply to, uh, have your development considered by the city. And, uh, you must submit a report summarizing your early participation activities with your application documents in order to be considered to have a complete application. So, uh, I understand that in September, this, um, radius for a thousand feet was discussed and, um, staff's understanding is that the planning commission direction is to keep that radius at a thousand feet. I will mention that type two currently also has a higher radius than the Michigan zoning enabling act, which is at five hundred feet notification. Um, we would like to add a, uh, inclusion of a project representative name, email address and phone number included with participation materials. This is something that could not only go onto the postcards, which are mailed within that radius, but it's something that we can post to a development, um, uh, profile within the, the hub website that I just mentioned, which is at engaged.a2gov.org. And also this is a, a hopefully consistent person that we could, um, continue to direct interested residents who want to hear directly from the development. For consistency, we've changed the days from business days to, um, calendar days. And, uh, this, uh, I believe was also discussed before, but this is kind of to the point of some of the, uh, commissioner comments that were just made on the earlier slide, which is what is the purpose of the meeting? The ability to influence a project is greater earlier in the phases of the project. Once it is ten days before consideration by planning commission, that is less. Um, although there may not be particular requirements to do what the public desires or shares at those meetings, the developer could choose to be responsive, it could align with their interest to do something that suggested. There could be something raised that they did not think about. And so how it is currently structured, um, uh, does offer that possibility. However, it, um, is an extra chunk of time before you're allowed to have your application considered. So in, in terms of where the city's priorities are, our direction were to shorten the development app, the development review process. So this is what that accomplishes, um, but it, it does have a different e- effect. So one of the things that we do find, especially with, um, currently with the, with the community participation meetings is that staff re- recall before um, those meetings, there were many people who would show up to planning commission meetings and say, this is the first that I'm hearing of this. And that although maybe the co-design aspects or the, you know, in, um, you know, great aspirations of shredding and influencing projects are less than perhaps ori- as originally intended or hoped by, as far as I understand from how that was originally introduced. One of the clear benefits that it has had is for people to be aware of development that is occurring around them. So at least from the staff perspective, that is one thing that's been very successful, is that information piece and letting people know this is going on. Here's, you know, uh, here's what the na- the name of the project is, here's the scope of it. We were thinking, how could we expand on that since that has been very successful to do what they do in some other cities, which is to have these notice signs. We were considering maybe this, this was something that we could put together in time for the eighteenth, but, um, upon further review, I think we need to do some due diligence to talk internally with other, more deeply with other affected departments, for example, our colleagues in the uh, building services or colleagues in engineering to understand a little bit more about how we would roll this out. Some of the pros of, uh, and a requirement like this, which we were thinking to tie to type one uh, threshold would be to better for, inform the public of the site activity. And also to potentially incorporate, um, information about subsequent phases and permits. So it would be possible based on how we considered the timing of this to leave open spaces for, you know, posting of updated information sheets, like many of these signs will have placeholders for eight and a half by eleven um, printouts, and you can update the information on the sign based on new site activity. It could be, you know, this has moved on to a new phase, this is now under consideration by the city engineering department. Here is an up, here is an updated application number that you could give on stream, for example, that sort of thing. Some of the cons is there is of course a time and a cost to order, install and maintain these. They are, if you, you know, do an internet search for these, as I have, you'll become aware of these are targets for vandalism and that has to come into play too. We can't assume that this is just always out there perfectly maintained. How does that affect the compliance of the developer with ordinance if the sign is defaced and those sorts of things? We want to think through those, could be a con. Time and cost to inspect this, um, additional site visits, um, placement. And then the, uh, new internal process creation that, uh, would be required to just figure out if we are going to put this in our permitting software. Was the planner responsible? If it's during later subsequent phases, uh, throughout the project lifecycle, how would we manage that? In some other cities, they have a fee to inspect, um, the sign. Here's, uh, an example from a website from the city of Seattle. They have information about their notice signs. If you look at the version that's in your packet, that is hyperlinked to this webpage. There is also an informational PDF for, um, members of the community that is linked here for the large notice signs, but these are required for, um, certain development projects and offers public comment options. Has some basic information about what type of development you're looking at when you walk by. Here, uh, are some examples from a local sign vendor because these are required. There are firms and vendors who now specialize in creating these for developers. And I believe my, their size, uh, was four feet by eight feet, so large, they're intended to be close to the, um, to the right of way accessible to passersby. And we did, uh, check with our city attorney's office to see if we would have constraints relative to our sign ordinance. And, um, uh, we're happy to hear that these could be considered separately and could have their own parameters associated with them without being constrained by the other, the sign regulations. An example from the city of Toronto, um, these cities also create, uh, templates which they make available. So this is an example of one of the templates that is shared by the city of Toronto, this is also hyperlinked if you are looking at the ver- So in terms of notice signs, this is something we would like to consider further. We wanted to do more due diligence before, um, proposing language. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, we'd like to look at other cities and codes, potentially other small and mid-sized cities to see if there are examples beyond just your Seattle's and New York City's, Vancouver's, these are very large metro areas. Um, how and what other comparison cities might have these? How are they written? What type of timing do they include? What type of review details do they require? What parts of the project lifecycle do they apply to? We're curious about those things and would like to have time to do some more due diligence. In terms of the, um, the other items that I just mentioned, timing come and impacts other departments and, um, you know, maybe just also make sure that there are people who could quickly do this locally if it were to become local law. Connected but separate from notice signs, um, we are thinking about the, the direction to change public hearings and some of that, um, just more largely, how can we consider community participation? There are some ways that we could consider through a, a regulatory pathway like requiring signage, but there are other things that we could do which do not require any regulation and might be maybe other coordination opportunities. One is a budget request we've recently made for a new, um, full-time position. Uh, we're not sure if this would be funded, but a site compliance coordinator has been requested to be funded from, um, multiple funds and, uh, within the city, but reporting to planning and assisting with the onsite compliance through a variety of permit phases through to the certificate of occupancy. This is the culmination of over a year of internal discussions talking about how to improve our development review process, and it's a position which did, um, maybe ten, fifteen years ago exist in some form, but, um, does not at the moment. This is a position which could improve communication, in particular with developers and builders. And also work with our new economic development director on a development manual to, uh, have clarity and expectations in process. But that is on the city to developer, internal to the city communications. But then there's back to residents and back to our community members. How can they know what is impacting them and when, um, how long is a project expected to go on and who they can contact? We, uh, want to explore further catalog and leverage what our existing regulations are related to nuisance mitigation. There are many other areas of code and there are many other places within our individual permits, whether it's a right-of-way permit or building permits, which do have provisions for nuisance mitigation and good behavior. And we, uh, we want to understand what all of those are because in some instances when people are, um, frustrated by a project, it's not just that the project is going in, it's the construction nuisance impact to business, impact to their walk to, uh, you know, around their neighborhood and so forth, that and noise, these types of things. So we'd like to, uh, catalog what we have already in place and then understand after that, um, what is missing? And, and if there are things that we're identifying that are missing, are there other people who, other places who are doing that? And are they doing it successfully and how are they doing it? Is it, um, through code and what does that code look like? If new requirements are then identified to be helpful, then we can come back uh, to the planning commission and propose specific language. I, we could go through perhaps to the end of this. There's only, I think, like three slides left. So, uh, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I'll let Mr. Leonard carry us through to the end of, um, the slide deck, and then we could circle back to discussion.
Sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
Hey, so, um, just to, uh, recap for the March eighteenth agenda, um, as I mentioned at the outset, there's a lot of changes that you're going to be seeing that we already covered at the September work session that were identified in that city council resolution. Um, just a reminder, there's, uh, the base of the community participation ordinance, timing and title. Um, public hearing requirements I mentioned, this is, um, right in line with what you're talking about. Uh, making sure that our ordinance is reflective of what the right opportunities are for public engagement. Um, uh, and then, uh, a smaller change was, uh, looking at our land division notification changes. Um, based on what I'm hearing from you this evening, the planning and development amendment changes were not something we discussed, but it's something that I anticipate, uh, trying to put together and presenting, uh, on that eighteenth agenda. But obviously, um, as indicated, uh, we'll get into the discussion about your feedback on some of the longer-term uh, research opportunities that we want for more ongoing communication, signage and the like. Next. And just to reiterate, um, for the PUD, I am hearing, uh, support to pursue that, and that's why we anticipate presenting it on the agenda. Um, just to give a quick snapshot of where we are with the tasks, um, from that resolution. Um, we've put together sort of a, a matrix, um, of, of some of these tasks. Uh, I'd just like to run through maybe very quickly, um, the status of those. Thank you. I knew you'd be on it. Um, so just a reminder, these are one of, this was the direction of some of four resolutions that came out of a new approach to economic development in the city. Um, lots of work to do. Uh, this is a draft of how, uh, I'm thinking about this work, uh, progressing. This is a draft of how I'm thinking about this work progressing. Some of it is going to be led by us, some of it's going to be led by other people at the city. So where you have other responsible lead projects such as engineering plans that would be appropriately led by systems planning, we will support them in any way desired. Bringing this one B, this is something that's just doesn't require any ordinance changes. This is something that Hank and I will be working to just to implement. That is, you know, trying to make sure that we are erring on the side of bringing. Projects to the planning commission when appropriate, that there might be some detail that is unresolved, but we think that it is easy to resolve after the case or with a conditional approval, rather than trying to tie up every loose end prior to that benchmark of approval. Similarly, one C, that will reflect in probably more motions presented to you where we'll be asking for your trust for us to resolve issues that might be unresolved at the time it's appearing on your agenda. Pursue modifications to the unified development code that expand the categories of modifications that may be considered. This is a to do. So that'll be after we get through this batch, something that we anticipate bringing to you later this year. Just as a reminder, all of these are anticipated to report back to city council by the end of this calendar year. We're talking about this evening modifications to, as requested on both two A. Some of those were presented in September last year. Some of those were submitted to you concepts here that might be considered further. Again, you're going to see one batch of those on the eighteenth and we are probably going to continue our research based on your direction of the additional items. Design review board has already been, that ordinance language has already been through you. It is scheduled for city council hearing, I think first reading on March seventeenth. And second reading will be at the second April meeting of the city council. On October eighteenth, you'll be seeing modifications as we showed in the previous slide for modifications to the public hearing requirements. Again, that is going to be a lot of alignment of our local ordinance with state law, limiting public hearing requirements to those that are prescribed by state law and not adding additional. And then site plan review, both. Four is related to some of the approval discussion. Site plan review modify the development code for categories. This is totally talking about applicability of different standards in the ordinance and which ones should apply in a full manner, which ones should apply in an incremental matter and which ones shouldn't apply when we're talking about modifications to maybe a portion of a site. That's something we'll be approaching later this year. Utility upsizing requirements, that's not something that, that'll be led by systems planning. They are responsible for that, that work. City administrator obviously makes budget decisions. We mentioned the site compliance coordinator. There are a lot of things that the city administrator and the city council are going to have to be considering in the context of a budget. And those, there are other staffing opportunities that the, that both of those entities will be thinking about towards improving our development review process across the organization. Simplify the right of way vacation process. This is actually largely completed. The city attorney has helped us to refine the process that we will use for this going forward. It's much more concise. It eliminates some previously in place steps that were not required by law. So this is largely completed. Amend city ordinance so that planning commission is no longer asked to recommend single family annexation. There's only to permit such applications to proceed directly to council. This we will not be pursuing. State law actually in fact does not allow this action. State law requires any zoning recommendation, any zoning actions by the city council to receive a recommendation from the planning commission. However, there is no such requirement for annexations. So what we anticipate is changing our procedures so annexations can proceed directly to the city council. But zoning actions will continue to have to follow that typical process. Item ten, we talked about that, that's going to be appearing on your agenda next week. Proposed to eliminate the notification requirements of that of land divisions that are not required by state law. And then longer term is the development manual. This is listed as responsibility of the economic development office. Our economic development officer has not even started yet. So by no means am I one to put work plan onto his plate. But nonetheless, I think it would be a great partner and lead to think about that in the context of a really customer service focus rather than necessarily city staff. But nonetheless, you'll see a lot of support for that work to make sure that we can accurately communicate what our expectations are. Building code compliance efficiency, that'll be something led by building services. And similarly, in addition to utility financing. Considering other possible ways for interconnection fees at the state agenda to provide more flexibility for how we deal with an aging infrastructure. We have a two hundred year old city and a lot of our infrastructure is on a similarly experienced course. So, so that's a quick overview of all of the items in that resolution. You can see we're making progress on many of them. And just wanted to contextualize that, that you're obviously a part of a lot of those steps as well.
Great. Thank you, Brett. I think that takes us to the open discussion component that I saw in the slideshow. I know we have already discussed signage as well as the PUD. Are there other items that people wanted to speak specifically on? And we will have Sarah kick it off for us.
Great. Yeah. Thank you. So I'm going back to the level one, level two discussion. And if I would just put out what I. Think makes sense in terms of setting the right expectations. I would move level one to only be things that are not by right. So if it is a rezoning, if there is any kind of discretion in it, those are the only things in my mind that should get a postcard. And. In terms of the timing of the community participation meeting, I. It only is going to have impact really on the outcome if it happens earlier. And we also know that things take a while to get through city review. And so I think it can happen concurrently, but I think instead I would change the timing rather than to be ten days before it comes, fifteen days before it comes before us. I would have it be fifteen, within fifteen days of application to the city. I feel like that's still the idea of truncating that a month. I think that the, the, I, the. Outcomes from that can get more in the developers minds and also city staff will know it as it's going through the multiple rounds of city staff review. So that's how I would change those. So that would both shrink the number of communities that are in level one, but also like retain that idea that like we want where there is discretion. Input earlier on. And then level two, I would actually vote no postcard for everything else that comes before us. I think that. Because the state says that the postcard is required for those, those, I think. And this is where maybe Dick will know better. The things that are, the three hundred feet is for special exception uses and rezonings, I think. Like keep that for, keep the postcards for those that are in level one. And level two, no postcard, but I do like the idea of a big sign. And I really like what Commissioner White said about what he saw. And if it were me, rather than having the thing where you swap out the notices, have a QR code that goes to that lovely engagement website where it shows you what's already been done and what's the next. So those are my suggestions.
Thanks, Sarah. We'll go to Deck and then Donnell.
Yes, good clarification. That comment, Commissioner Mills, so if the type one projects were now. Only. You know, rezoning.
PUDs, rezoning, special exception uses.
Then, and you like the idea of a development sign requirement. Exploring that, what would the? What types of projects would you tie the signage to if? The level, if the type one project thresholds were so reduced.
I would.
Keeping in mind what, what we were trying to think about is. Is it reasonable for smaller projects to have this signage that they order, maintain, install, et cetera? You know, so we're, we're trying to like find, we were thinking of tying that to larger developments.
I'm, and what I'm weighing is like, how much does it cost to send the postcard versus how much does it cost to maintain the sign? And who's going to see the postcard versus who's going to see the sign? I think the sign is way more impactful and I don't know that it's that much more expensive personally. So, and again, I know that this is part of a bigger effort. If there's going to be a, even if it's not a dedicated public hearing, but an opportunity in our meetings to speak. And we still think that that is an important element of this. I think. That those are the projects that should get assigned, that where there should be. Advanced notice that this is coming. Before the. Bulldozer, it's not bulldozers, but you know, earth movers are there. So those are, that's, that's who I would think. I would do more signs, fewer postcards. And only the public participation meeting in the.
And do that within, more like within ten fifteen days of, of the plan application instead of.
Within application rather than our decision, exactly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. We'll go to Deck.
Yeah, just kind of following along on that. I was curious. How much? The changes that you're proposing for the typical project. Does, how much time does the developer really have? And if you're, if you're having them do a public meeting fifteen days before the city planning commission, it's pretty late in the project at that point and the reality is they're not going to change anything at that point, right? So I'm trying to noodle through my brain, like how much is the typical city staff review period? And even doing it simultaneously, is that too late? I mean, if you've had to pull a proposal together and the staff is reviewing it, realistically, are they going to make any substantive, substantial changes at that point based on feedback they're getting from the community? And this is all in the kind of, if we're going to ask for citizen input and participation, we ought to do it in a way that that could realistically affect the project. And if we're not going to do that, then we shouldn't ask for it. Cause you're just setting people up to get really mad that you're not hearing them and you're not, they're not having a meaningful opportunity. So I don't, but I'm not familiar enough with the timing and how all of this works to now. I'm not trying to accuse, I'm not accusing you of trying to cut off public support. I'm just trying to make sure that what's being proposed actually makes sense for what the purpose of that is. So that was that question. And then in terms of signs, I agree, signs are really effective. I think we're at the point where you could do a CRQ, what is it, QR?
Yeah.
No, I mean. Two hundred less codes and have the sign be really simple. I don't think it needs to be nearly as fancy as the sample signs you were showing. If there was a description and a QR code and then all of that stuff could be maintained on the website and you wouldn't have the vandalism problem, right? That you would with the sign, so kind of make that as simple as possible. I tend to agree with Sarah. Notice the big projects where there's discretion and make sure there's valuable, there's meaningful public participation. For the larger type two things, I don't know what the threshold would be, but I think a sign that I really liked Donnell's comment. Here's a sign telling you what's happening. Your comments aren't going to change anything, but we want to keep you informed. I think that's a useful communication to have the city and that could be done through a sign with a QR code. So I'm kind of, I guess my big question is on the timing. What, how do we make sure that if we're going to give folks the opportunity to participate, that it's happening at a place where it could actually have, have some impact? That, that's the question. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the, the timing that we showed that was redlined was carried over from the early accommodation of how do we incorporate the council resolution in September? But just to, you know, just to be clear, like I am, and I like the proposals that have been brought forward just now to have that happen concurrently and earlier. Maybe not stopping the application from moving forward, but early in the process. So that makes a lot of sense to me. Is a great evolution of. How we were trying to apply the directives.
Gotcha. Let's go to, Brett, did you want to respond directly to that?
Yeah, if I could briefly.
Yeah, and then we'll go to Donnell and Lisa.
So I think that sort of what Commissioner Mills was identifying is very consistent with the council direction. So I would echo Hank's response to that. I just want to contextualize though, when we're talking about one of, one of the challenges with this ordinance and this outcome is having it happen in such a time where there's a chance for it to be effective, right? And I just want to, but I want to be clear, right now, we require it to happen before an application is made. And I would posture that I don't think it's that effective. What happens right now is it has to happen within like, it can't, you have to hold that meeting. Max Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's like ten days before you actually submit your application. And I would tell you, the vast majority of the time that my team is talking about with. Developers or applicants about that process, they are putting together a calendar and they are more often than not, I don't want to say all the time, but more often than not, they are. Making sure and they're hitting that deadline basically within a week or two of that ten days before the application. And so even at that time period. I just want to be honest, there's the likelihood that something's going to happen out of that. That is, that the project is going to be drastically changed from that point. I don't want to say it never happens, but it probably never happens and it is very rare. So the notion of impact in order to happen would have to be. Potentially months before. An applicant. Contracts with a civil engineer to start designing the site, to start working with an architect to design the building. And so I just, I just want to contextualize that. I, again, I want to echo what Hank was saying. I think that what's being discussed here is still in line. But I want to be clear, whether it happens ten days before an application, ten or fifteen days after an application, or ten or fifteen days before appearing on an agenda. I, I think you can make a case that as you get further, less changes are possible. But I want to be clear, you're not, you're not talking about a huge swing of opportunity. It is a very minor swing of opportunity.
Thank you. Donnell?
Thanks. So Commissioner Mills or Sarah, she took a little of my thunder because she said all the things I wanted, which was simplify type one, stop sending postcards type two and do the signs. And I can attest, there is a sign for, I think it's an R four C in my neighborhood that has been up for like three years. It has not been vandalized. It's on a two by four, it's facing Ann Arbor Saline Road. And I think those things are super helpful because people walk by, they drive by, they might be stuck in traffic. They look over and now they can sort of see what's going on. The thing that, and I think Sarah also mentioned this, which is, or maybe it was Commissioner Norton, which is if, if we do simplify the sign and we do a QR code, have all the details be at your Engage website, which I think is really fantastic. And if the Engage website could have like a stage, sort of like, here's where we are in this project. Here's where sort of the best time to give input would be. Here's the next stage, like what's coming up? Because I think the thing that I have experienced being at the table is. We, not a lot of people in our community are policy walks. And so they don't spend a lot of time on sort of the minutia, as it were, of city government. And they may see something, but not really like tune into it. And so my second suggestion was going to be, could we? Start a dialogue about how we can do a little bit of this informing at the actual planning table. And it could be passive. It could be like a little PowerPoint presentation that runs while we are gathering before the meeting starts. That says, hey, there's three petitions that are going to be here. This is a public hearing, here's how you can speak at this public hearing. That type of thing, because I think if people are seeing it on CTEN, they're seeing it in the room. It can just passively communicate, here's what's going on, here's how your input informs. And I did want to say, I think Mr. Garber is right that. Developers who come before the planning commission. I don't know how to say this as diplomatically as I want to, because this will be recorded and used. A lot of developers that come before the planning table. A lot of developers that come before the planning table. Um. Seem to want to work with both the planning table and the city to get their development. Moving forward. So they tend to be open. I, maybe is what I'm trying to grasp. And so when things come up at the table. Developers have been fairly receptive in a lot of ways, in in some ways that even surprised me. And so. There is something about, you know, like, I care a lot about bikes. Most developers do the bare minimum about biking. And I know we have influenced developers on biking, both bike storage. Um, as well as securing bikes, as well as, um, going back to say, is there something that we can do to improve? And those comments are at the very end because we're looking at a site plan. And that's when I see, oh, there's no biking stuff here. So can you do this? And maybe it's because it's a lower hanging fruit thing, so they can do it. Um, but anyway, I just, I just wanted to acknowledge that, that I think Mr. Garber is right, that there. There are opportunities at the table that someone's comment does influence a developer. And that they are open to that influence and they do make a change. I don't think it's universal. I don't think it's like. They're gonna, I, I ask every developer to build something higher and bigger and more dense and not all of them do that. So. I just want to just make sure that got into the mix, but I would love to see like a. PowerPoint that ties in to what we're doing. And it could have the QR code on it, which goes to the engage page, which is easier to navigate. Than the stuff that we have in place now. But I appreciate all of this. I think this is going to make. Both what we do, um, better. It's going to help the public be more informed and I think it'll, um, improve conversations at the table.
Thanks, Donal. We'll go to Lisa, Julie, and Sarah. So Lisa. Oh, you're on mute. Sorry. Twenty twenty five and it still happens. All good.
This is so dumb. Um, okay. So the question that I'm really struggling is, is with is where is the sweet spot? For the community meeting and. And then also. What gets people thinking about projects? And in a constructive way or not. So. There, a sign just went up for that, um, one that we have on Long Shore Drive, that project that we approved. A year ago. And I started getting questions from neighbors. And I was like, why are they contacting me? And then I was walking the dog and I realized, oh. It's this big four by eight sign. And there's a huge thread on next door. How on earth would anyone approve this? It has to be zoning says that it has to be consistent with the neighborhood and this one isn't. And I thought, oh, dear me. So I, I think signs would be powerful communication. Now that project by our definition. Wouldn't merit a sign if we were only going to do signs for level one. It would have merited a sign for level two. But. The level two category, I believe that Julie really nailed it when she said it sort of flags that, well, you should worry about this. And so, and I don't think that we want to be flagging people to make them upset. I think we want them to know. How the city is changing around them and we want them to be able to learn. So I mean, if rather than going to next door, people were. Hitting a QR code. I mean, this sign is just advertising here, buy your four million dollar condo and you can live here. Um. But if, if instead I, these signs were able to say, this project aligns with the zoning. So. You know, it's, it's coming, it's working its way through the pipeline. I don't know, you know, Donal's theory is we invite your feedback. But it is not likely to change the outcome. I. I'm just, I'm really, so like, there's a couple of sweet spots I'm working on here, like when is information? When and how is information useful to people? And I do think the signs are way, but like, nobody tunes into our meetings except for. The handful of people who tune into our meetings and the other people are surprised. And that, the surprise that people were expressing. A few weeks ago about the comp plan, they had been notified through their neighborhood organization, but they didn't pay attention to that email. There are so many emails I don't pay attention to. I understand that. Somehow they missed all the signs though downtown, which is a little harder to fathom. I mean, I think that's been an excellent effort. So. I, you know, I think, I, I, I really like the idea of the sign. A big sign, but I don't know which projects it should apply to. And I, and I'm just really stuck on. The community meeting thing, but I did have examples of community meeting input that changed a project for the better. The pinball Pete's issue that came up at a community meeting. Um, the senior living project that Brett, you've been showing us pictures of, and for some reason I'm. Forgetting its name, even though I felt like it was engraved. Um. There was. Yes, Lockwood, Lockwood two. Because there was an accommodation made so that fire trucks could pass, but there couldn't be cut through traffic. And that came out of a. Community meeting. Ann Arbor Villages offered all electric for the for sale townhomes. I don't, I mean, I know that I was at the community meeting for that one. It of course happened years before the negotiation around that occurred through staff with staff. But. Quite, you know, suggestions about going electric, about trying out geothermal, because it's such a huge site. Those things were made at the community meeting and maybe that primed that developer, I don't know. So that when staff suggested that they go electric. For the for sale townhomes, which that project didn't come with that. Maybe that they were primed for that. So I'm not. I, I am really, really torn about all of this and I would like staff to. Help us a little bit with some more guidance about. Yeah.
We'll continue to research it definitely. And I, I was just checking those details for. Uh, four sixteen Long Shore, I believe now it's addressed. Long Shore, um, and it does appear that it would have been, it was a type two project, fifteen unit. Um, four stories. Not a rezoning, so, uh, I do see your point. I just wanted to remind that. Our staff do post sites a week prior. To public hearings with information about, um, what is proposed, when the meeting will be, et cetera, but. Uh, it's not the same as having, you know, that's like a. Eleven by seventeen, it's, it's not as conspicuous and it definitely doesn't have this, the richness of detail. We're still thinking through, I did share on screen. Briefly, uh, the engage site, if you haven't seen it, that. In terms of how we are incorporating projects into this, as I said, we're right now just pulling those type one projects. If that starts to change significantly, we'll have to figure out when and what thresholds we use to place projects. Um, the maintenance of those project details is also something that. We want to ensure we can continue to upkeep, so.
Yeah, I'm afraid we're going to make this project process more cumbersome, actually. I'm afraid that's where we're leaning right now, but that's why I want staff to advise us some more.
Thanks, Lisa. We'll go to Julie and Sarah.
So I think I'll come in on the more cumbersome point and, uh. Back in my previous life as the sort of person who comes from a neighborhood and. Yells at planning commission and yells at city council about all the terrible things they're doing in my neighborhood. Um, there's not a perfect time. And I, and I think we can continue to keep trying to, to get the best time. But I don't think there is a perfect time because it used to be that it was later and there was a lot of. Advocacy for moving these times earlier. I think that has worked really well for the developers who want it to work really well. And I think there are some developers, there have been developers in my neighborhood. Who met repeatedly with multiple neighborhood people who, who loved the input, made lots of changes. Long before the city mandated. Requests like, and then there are developers. Situations, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's the person or the situation or the team or whatever, but who won't make, I mean. It is what it is. They're coming in with and the things they'll change are. The very absolute mandated, or it's something that just doesn't make sense. Like, don't put a building here, we want to park. Like, that's not going to. That's not going to happen. And so I think. I think it's, it's a case of doing our best and seeing where there are problems. And trying to mitigate those problems, but I don't think there's a magic number. I don't think there's a magic time. I, I think it's always going to be a little fraught and trying to do the best if we notice that there's something that's not working. Is, is good. Um. But I just, I just don't think that there is one perfect place because one of the things when you come really early. When there is actual time to make changes. It's really hard for people who aren't used to conceptualizing. A building from a two D. Drawing, you know, people, the, someone would have to come with really fully realized renderings. For people to really understand how it would affect. Their house or their neighborhood or the street or whatever they're concerned about. And, and then if there are fully realized renderings of a project that is not fully realized. That's problematic because they think that, oh, well, there was a driveway there when I looked at it three years ago and now there's not a driveway. And. You know, the reverse is if you come with a fully realized project, it's going to be later in the process. So. Not to diminish any, I think it's really important to have these discussions. But I, I think it's going to, it's a, it's a constant. Discussion, which is good, but and to find where there are places. If we know there's something not working, let's not do that. Let's strive for something better, but. I think there's always going to be pitfalls. Um, and good things, not only pitfalls, but, uh, the other thing is. And I'm going to say this, I'm just going to throw it out and then run away, but, um, maybe official posts on something like next door. The police do it, no comments, no, but just. This development is coming up, like, we're talking about QR codes and we're talking about signs. But these big discussions aren't happening, standing in front of a sign, they're not happening. With people going to. Sites, they're happening on these big communication like next door, Facebook, there's a, a website developing Ann Ar- or a Facebook page developing Ann Arbor. It's a person who's just takes the developments that they see and posts it on Facebook and there are some good discussions. So, um, I think maybe all of those things. Not everyone, like, I would definitely say next door, don't post anything with a discussion. Do it more as an informational. But, but if we really want to get in information out to people, there are venues for that. Um. And I really like Commissioner Weish's thoughts about doing a little bit of a training or informational or. Hey, where are we in this process? What is your role? Sort of boilerplate thing. I know by the time we get all the Zoom meetings and stuff, there's a lot of. Boilerplate discussion, but, um, I think that could be helpful for some people because. I remember one, uh, meeting where someone came up and said they've never, you know, they never were here before a body like ours. Um, but they'd only seen it on Parks and Rec. And so that's where a lot of people are coming from is. You know, they really have very little information about what happens at these public meetings. And can feel either upset or slighted because they don't understand what, where they fit in the process. So just some of my thoughts.
Thanks, Julie. Sarah?
Thanks. Um, so I'm also a little bit conflicted on like the right timing for a community meeting. Um, this is probably a gross. Oversimplify or very broad statement, but I think that if a developer. At the start of their process is really looking for. You know, community input and is really open to change, they'll seek it out regardless of whether or not it's required. I think just making it the checkbox like. I mean, if we have to do it, we have to do it, but I, I think. Um. You know, doing something like a, like a sign. And maybe for type one, it can be a requirement and type two, it can be recommended that a developer do this. Uh, but a sign feels like it could trigger a lot more potential engagement or at least. Questions or at least like understanding by the community that like something is coming up than our noticing does that. I, I tried to look something up once and I couldn't even figure out how to use that website. So. Um, I'm very, um. I think that the sign idea is great. I think that, that doing the due diligence, um, that Hank had on that slide is important, especially if it's a lot of extra cost. But I wonder if, and I'd be curious, like, what other cities do in terms of if there's like a template that could be offered so that the developer can just sort of like. It's the same exact one all the time. You just input the stuff, you don't have to design anything and then. You know, maybe, maybe a local printer can cut some sort of deal.
That is often the case. Yeah.
Awesome. Um, and then timing too, I'd be curious, like when other cities. Require their developers to put up the signs, like is it before they actually apply? Um. And then what happens if a developer doesn't yet own the property? I feel like we've had that, we've had projects come to us several times where they haven't actually like finalized the deal. So are they even allowed to post signage on a property that they don't own? Those are just the things that I would like to hear more about, but I feel like this potential sign. Um, solution could help with some of this like. Community understanding of like what's going on and make people feel like. They at least know how to contact the developer if there's a question or, um, you know, a concern or. Um, they can, they don't get updates by clicking a QR code or something like that. Um, I think it's the surprise element that makes people the most frustrated. Like, I know I did this, this was happening and then I got this like. On next door, I saw that there's a public hearing in three hours. And so here I am and I hate this project. And it's like, if they had known about it. Earlier, because they'd seen a sign, because they drive by it all the time, or it's in their neighborhood, then like. Maybe there would be more opportunity to learn. And understand and contact the developer before they come to this public hearing and scream and think that it's going to change something when we know that it's not going to. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. Donal?
Uh, just real quick, uh, Hank, if, is it possible for you to share your screen and go to the engage, um, website? Cause I, I just wanted to.
It is possible. I actually had another. Page I wanted to show at the same time, which. Is. To, uh, just really quickly, I wanted to, I think we have brought this up before, but to comply with the. All right, U D C requirements that we keep a copy of the plan for public access. We have this website which allows you to filter by application type and. Also let you filter by application year so that you can see at a glance. Uh, what had, this is after something has officially been applied for in stream. There's project details, so the short code for that is. A two gov dot org slash public plan map and the purpose is. And the genesis of it is what I just described. And then this is the recently launched engage. Dot A two gov dot org, right, which you are able to. Uh, isolate to private development projects.
Could you, uh, pull up the, um, Vandermeer? Uh, Barton pedestrian trail tunnel one? And then I'll make my comment and hopefully it'll be. It'll make sense. It was right on the main page for me. I don't know if your page is.
Oh, okay.
It's under active. It was like. Let's, maybe I can share my screen since I have it up. You have a special version.
No, I don't have a special version. I'm.
No, 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 I, I'm just.
I might randomize the order or something.
There, there, it's right there under active products before you clicked that button. Keep scrolling down the page. Sorry.
Oh, right here.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
I think this is a perfect example of what I'm envisioning. It has the project details. It literally has a section called impacts to me. And then it aggregates all of the relevant documents, uh, into a dropdown. And what you just showed us is great. That's going to work for some of us who are good at websites, but for some of us who are not good at websites. Trying to figure out how to get to the actual site plan is difficult. And then I love the timeline. It's walking you through. Hey, here are all of the stages of what this is going to look like. Here's where we are. Hey, here are all of the stages of what this is going to look like. Here's where we are. And the only thing that I think is missing from this is how do I get updates about this project or other projects? Which could be the Gov Delivery, uh, subscription service that the city already has. If there was a link for that on this page, this page would be perfect as an example of we put a sign on all the developments, if that made sense from a staff perspective. They had a QR code, the QR code went to their Engage page. Um, I feel like this would be a huge step uh, forward in terms of communication and engagement. And I would love this because it would be so easy to just point people here to say, hey, here's what this project is. Here's the impact to you. Here's all the documents. Here's how it fits in the city code, all of that. So I just wanted to say, it looks like we're already doing it in some aspects. I wonder if we can just bring it in. And if you were to pull up the 371 Silo Church development, which is a planning one, which is right next to it, it's two over. You'll see that, uh, the, the important date is here, it has passed, but we're not saying, well, what comes next? So how should I be thinking about this development? When are they going to start construction? Uh, is there going to be impacts to traffic? Like all of those things are the things that we heard at the table. And so this feels like a great place where all of that could be aggregated. So I just wanted to say kudos to whoever thought up this, uh, Engage website. And if we could just leverage it, uh, to our benefit, I feel like it would solve some of our communication problems.
Brett, also, if we have time, Mr. Chair was going to make an announcement about, uh, an idea that's just now coming to fruition from.
Yeah. I won't. So, so just, just following up on those conversations, we're pretty excited about this Engage tool as well. I wanted to, um, and I think we'll explore it. As you can see, we're trying to figure out the best way for us to use it. In the past, we had, I had explored like a, frankly, a staffing model where the planning department had a dedicated communications person. Um, and I think this conversation is sort of, uh, around, around that, right? It's what is the right way to communicate to the public? Sometimes it's just information. Sometimes it's asking questions. So we'll, we'll continue to think about it. Those are great ideas. But in the, um, realm of public engagement, I just wanted to share another, um, uh, brainchild that, uh, I've been working with with our team. We're going to have our first, um, we're calling it so far A two to you. And it is, uh, ungloriously a planning services office hours that's going to be held at Westgate Library on April 17th from three to seven PM. And we are not coming with any, um, particular project or particular engagement question. We are simply going to be setting up shop at the Westgate Library for an afternoon for people who just might be a more convenient way for them to access the planning staff. Uh, we're going to have folks there, uh, planners who can talk about projects. We're going to have folks who can talk about, uh, permit, building permits, uh, you know, zoning permits, smaller scale or whatever is on people's minds. So, um, you'll see a more, um, information release on that, but it seemed apropos. Thanks, uh, to Deputy Manager Kelly for reminding me. Definitely in the lines of another example of how the planning department is trying to think about new and different ways to enact with our community.
Did you say the date again in April?
April 17th. Three to seven PM, Westgate Library. Got it.
So can we wander by and play stump the planning staff?
Yeah.
Well, I'll give you a chair.
Meant to be the first in a series, but we're, we're trying to figure out what success would look like and, um, we're open to your feedback on that as well.
And that's super helpful. Um, okay. Uh, with that, do we have any other comments? Lisa, um, have a final thoughts before we go to public comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say very quickly, libraries have worked really well for voting. So I think libraries could be great for this and they're the turnout at the branch libraries and stuff for the comp plan were also really good. So I really, I love that choice.
Gotcha. Sarah, last.
Seems like this is an opportunity to use, um, next door or Facebook to get out the word about that. That's cool.
Gotcha. Great. Thank you, everybody for the great comments. With that, we're going to go to public comment. This is the last chance for people to speak up to three minutes on any item. Please raise your hand and state your name and address at the beginning of the comments. Brett, do we have any folks who'd like to chat?
Not yet. To listeners. Let's give it a few seconds as one of my most delightful chairs sometimes says. No hands raised.
All right. With that, we will actually conclude the public comment. And with that, we're going to move on to adjournment. So thank you, everybody, and have a great evening. Bye.